We've learned.
Saturday.
I think it's only down the guy.
Cool.
I'm saying in Austin.
Um.
Oh, we got new people.
Um.
Yes.
That was.
So probably.
Let's just.
Here's the problem.
So that much.
I think yes, I think we're got. Are we good with the 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 whole side five too?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, actually, so yeah, we're kind of search order. And we're just. You need to. Yeah. Okay. Where are they? All right. I'm not here. We're gonna go ahead and meet at the board and do roll calls. Yeah, so, um. Alternate director and Fanti.
Here.
Um. Director Joe's.
Here.
Uh, Chair Mary Me.
Here.
Uh, alternate director Eaton Hopper.
Here.
And then director circle.
Here.
All five members present.
Okay, we have no additions or deletions to the agenda. That's right. Uh, let's go ahead and move to public comment. If anybody has a comment they want to make, might need to check online too. It's on. No public comment?
Yeah, if you're online and you wish to make a public comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. Or or begin speaking.
They're all muted, so let's go ahead and move on then to the consent agenda.
Yeah, so this one's consent agenda. We've got meeting minutes from the January twenty twenty. Sorry, twenty twenty five. Uh, Jews EMA GSA meeting, and then we've got uh our financial reports. Uh, one one item note is you were checking your email today. We sent out an updated packet with updated financial reports. So that is the latest and greatest updated as of today, I believe. And Adrian is on the line, our bookkeeper, uh available answering questions on the financial reports.
What were the changes from?
Uh, even there were some additional checks that were written. Um, and so they were they weren't captured in the first financial reports because of when they were written. So they process we processed the reports to capture all of the checks that were written today.
Maybe we want to do. I like which ones they are. The bookkeeper's online, she can.
Uh, one.
Listen through the delta.
Yeah, I think it was just the one check, Adrian.
Um, the big confluence one.
Yeah.
Was the only change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a engineering solutions check for the Prop sixty eight grant support. Um, and that that check was delayed relative to the other checks because there was a bit of back and forth getting the invoice that was formatted correctly so they could be submitted for reimbursement for the Prop sixty eight grant. Which uh so it was for services provided last quarter, October, November, December.
There's a couple in here that are confluence engineering solutions, so. This can you call up the check number then? Because.
Um, so that'd be one oh seven oh.
Okay, one oh seven.
Yeah. I didn't see it was today. It's late.
Since you know, this is the last. Okay. Did you get the other disturbing agendas?
Mm hmm.
Then it should be the same email distribution list.
And that was the only change then?
That was the only change we updated.
Yeah.
I guess. There came a motion to approve the consent agenda. Article five and say and B.
I'll look at the consent agenda items A and B. But. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Any opposed? Right to motion thousand. Okay, so item five. Yeah, so um informational items, so we've got, and you may have noticed this both by the number of pages and the length of the agenda. We've got a lot to cover today, so I'm gonna shut up and try to move into this as quickly as possible. Uh, no new well permits were submitted uh from County EHS to the EMA GSA this month. Um, I think we've talked about the Freeman diversion United Water Presentation and Tour that's scheduled for March twenty sixth. Uh, there's still an opportunity to sign up and attend that tour. Um, and I think we we have a deadline of March third uh to indicate interest in attending and competing the waiver. And just quickly, grant pursuit update. This was an item that came up at our last meeting. There was uh interest in us reaching out to a consultant that I believe is doing work for the city of Solvang, if not uh other entities, um California consulting. So we we reached out to them, we had an introductory meeting, and then we should be getting a proposal for. It was, you know, what they they called it a needs assessment. They kind of assess your organization, find out what your needs are, and then they make recommendations for what uh grants and and or or loan programs you may want to consider chasing. And then they have a couple of models. They have a subscription model for preparing grant applications, and then they also have a uh like a T and M model where you you pay an hourly rate for specific grant pursuits. So when when we get that information, or I think we may have it as a a couple hours ago, the chair of staff and, you know, bring it back to the board for consideration uh the future day.
Okay, so Solvang is is working with them currently. Is the county or Buellton or other working with them?
Buellton, I believe.
Buellton, okay.
Have they ever done anything with groundwater?
Uh, they they indicated they have. One of the things we asked for was to highlight that um within their client list, because, yeah, we are not like a city. We are a groundwater sustainability agency, so the types of projects or or management actions, but we can add to be a lot different than more infrastructure focused entities.
And do we know of any other consultants that would maybe really know our business? Is there any, have you researched any of that?
We have not done a deep dive. We'd be happy to look into other consultants. This was just an initial lead that we thought we would look at, but um yeah, there's. Um, then really, we could look to see if there's other. You know, I've been working in groundwater, I don't know there's necessarily a a focus. I shouldn't say that. I'm sure there is somebody out there that focuses on grants for groundwater management organizations. I don't know any, but we could definitely look.
Okay, and then your counterparts throughout the state. Do you have a pretty good connection with counterparts who are dealing with ground? Because they might be able to tell you, oh, yeah, we use X Y Z, and they were really good for giving us, yada, yada.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, we've got a network. Um, I'm gonna change this plug, but I I'm currently the president of the Central Coast Branch of Groundwater Resources Association. It's the Central Coast Focus Groundwater Professional Association. And love to see any of all of you at our meetings. A uh frequent attendee. Katie is also an officer, uh recently joined our our group. And so, yeah, that's the ground, you know, the local, and then there's a statewide chartering. Here is the.
How great.
That one, so the statewide organization that has annual conference did its great networking opportunity. You know, great opportunity for directors to consider going to their Western Groundwater Congress. It's a groundwater focus uh conference um with presentations all the way from highly technical to ministerial sigma.
When you went to. No, I went to the UWI conference that they'll be on last August. It's down Mission Bay. They just met again in Palm Springs yesterday. I think they wrapped up this morning, so.
Hmm.
As the Urban Water Institute. So there's there's a lot of different, you know, groups that are in the water space, but we did get the presentation on sigma um from Central Valley in terms of T type that particular conference. So but they do try to cover a lot of things, not necessarily focused on groundwater, but. As you know.
Stephanie, if you want, she's doing is Prop sixteen.
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know. Yeah, and uh ironically, the Central Coast Branch is actually, uh their next meeting will be in March. Um, sorry, you'd ask about groundwater associations. So yeah, and it's a tour of the Freeman diversion facility. So, um.
Yeah, so so getting back to the grant pursuit, um can you also kind of follow up with both solving and Buellton and just get some feedback on the services they perform? Just so they maybe comment on that thing this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, we'll we'll bring definitely, we're more work to be done in the staff level before bringing anything to the board. We did just want to follow up on that request from the last meeting.
And and there was um high praise from solving.
That's what I recall, you know, the last meeting.
All right, um, I guess we're gonna go to item six, uh election or appointment of officers for the EMA.
Yeah, so item six, selection appointment of officers, something that we we probably actually should have done last meeting, but um we're here. Uh, we've included in your agenda packet, just an excerpt from uh the JPA about the officers uh for the EMA GSA. Um, something that we need to do on an annual basis. The officers may serve multiple consecutive terms with no term limits, resign anytime, and you can read the provisions here. But I guess I, um, our current officers are Chair Mary Me, Vice Chair Joe's, and then Director Arona is Secretary Treasure. But I I really defer to the board for how they would like to handle future officers.
Thank you.
Well, at our last meeting, I think we discussed um just rotating that that would be uh that the vice chair would move into the chair. Like maybe the secretary would move into the vice chair and that everybody would take their term. So um I I think that works very well on most every other board that I serve on. And so I would recommend that as a strategy.
Yeah, and I talked with Elizabeth on it. She was into it too.
Yeah.
That's how she told you. You give her that too?
So um I would nominate Doug Circle as Secretary Treasure.
Okay.
And and.
Well, hold on, don't we have to leave the chair for?
Well, I mean, that that's obvious, but the chair would be Brad, Elizabeth would be the vice chair, and then you have a secretary treasure.
Good. Sounds good. Yeah, motion above, Brad.
Yeah.
We we need a second, probably.
Wouldn't you? I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. All all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Just extension, okay. Brad, here's the virtual gavel. I guess I'm passing it over to you now.
All right. Uh, do we want to rearrange or how affected a meeting?
Help me. Well, better want to sit.
I did the last one. I threw it. Um. Okay. That's uh the CAG, right? Yeah, we're up. I'm being CAG's gonna. About that.
Yeah, item six B, so another request from the last board meeting was to reengage with the CAG. Um, and sort of take stock of our our CAG members and their interest in continuing participating in the CAG. So we held a CAG meeting on Wednesday, February nineteenth um here at the Culveration District Headquarters. We had pretty good attendance, I I felt like from the CAG members, which was great to see. Uh, and so we've included in your agenda packet uh a list of the the previous CAG members, sort of their relation to the EMA, which was part of their initial application. And it shows, you know, whether they, you know, are residents within the uh public water utility, or they have, you know, they're domestic well owner, um whether they're an ag representative. And then the third column is um whether or not they have indicated that they would like to continue participating in the CAG. Um, I would say that I think we can update that we did hear from that or that Kevin Merrill uh would be interested in continuing to participate in the CAG as an ag rep. So that's not reflected in this agenda that came in more recently. Uh, but we do have uh one CAG member, Elizabeth Barnum, that I I understand has indicated she's not interested in continuing to participate in the CAG. And then Tim Gorham has kind of indicated tentative interest in continued participation in CAG. And that's, so um one of the thoughts that we had is, and a lot of this was sort of the people that showed up. We we asked at the meeting, uh we followed up a little bit, but it really wasn't a formal solicitation. Uh, so we could do sort of a more formal outreach through the.
Yeah, we have a process, I believe, that.
There is.
To give these members. That's just just why reinvent the wheel, just do that and solicit, and especially uh to fill them. Because, you know, domestic is a top priority per D double R. I mean, that's huge. If we impact domestic wells, it's like, so that's an important position we've got to have. Yeah, let's get the outreach. It'd be good to get outreach for all, you know? And so you can maybe have a a list of members, because who knows, someone may want to drop off anytime, yeah, you know, active list.
Mutual water companies are easier, at least at least I know who they are. Do we have a list of domestic well people in our management area?
Not at this point, uh it's, we'll talk about that in a future or later agenda item, but I I not that I'm aware of. Now, there are certain data sets uh that have information on wells that we could look to. And there are.
I got for um a fire related topic, some contact information from Jim Kim uh in county. Would better know how to appropriate to mine, I have it here.
Okay. Yeah, you could find out, well, you can share that with us, that would be helpful. Yeah, I mean, any sort of existing data sets that we can utilize when we're. We look at all the representation.
We'll we'll work through the data set to get all all the all the wells.
So, yeah, so it sounds like, guys, what I'm hearing is the direction from the board to use the existing system for soliciting CAG members to fill some of its current vacancies. Um, it sort of in as if desired, sort of maintaining those sort of designations. So like look for a domestic well owner and maybe a mutual water company, I think. Tim, my recollection is Tim was sort of representing the water company.
Yeah, he was mutual water with Stockton.
Okay. And we did have somebody participating in the last CAG meeting virtually that indicated potential interest that was involved mutual water company. So there may be a bit there. I guess what I what I would ask for from you is, you know, we can send out and you can help last and, you know, try to solicit a lot of interest, but but nothing beats the boots on the ground, you know?
We need a list of names to see who we know who might have the right.
Yeah.
Background.
And so, yeah, if we could get the board and.
Yeah, CAG maybe has ideas too. You've got to make that people that you know that show interest. Mary. No.
Yeah, um, I I actually, Elizabeth was his ideal that I remember. Um, I know one or two people are buying Valor Canyon well. But I, the one person I know really well was, I don't think it's good. It's having medical issues, so.
Valor. Yeah, we got to work with.
Yeah, we'll put something together using a previous structure, we'll send it out, and then, you know, at that point, you guys have ideas.
Valor, the Alamo, the Potter, like that way.
Not exactly sure where the EMA line is.
Right.
I see them.
Hmm.
Yeah. Please send out the email to the board members so we can pass it on to somebody else as well.
Yeah, so I mean, Arden, at this point, our primary form of communication is the EMA GSA email distribution list, which you all are a part of, as well as I'm sure everybody else here, I would assume. So plus others, anybody who's signed up on the website or previously indicated interest. So that that's kind of how we, that's how we solicited land on our participation for the Prop sixty eight grant project. Um, we got some feedback through the the direct email, but I think we got a lot of it through people, you know, reaching out in the one on one context. So just we use both strategies. Get the word out.
Okay. Okay, item C, receiving file, Prop sixty eight round two, sustainable groundwater management grant. My case, my thing, component two, one. Okay.
So, yeah, I got a little creative with our agenda structuring here. It was partially for me to kind of organize it in my mind. Like we have the Prop sixty eight grant, we've got four primary components of the EMA participating in. We've got multiple initiatives. I think there's up to seven or eight tasks per component, uh multiple initiatives that are being worked on. And so I thought we could maybe just try to structure them in our agenda as a sharpened brand. By the way, we can try to keep track, so um unless there's a sort of an interest in, well, I think we, as we go through the individual components, I think we'll cover the update of a lot of the brand components. Uh, if there are specific questions at the end about anything we don't cover, feel free to ask me, and I'll, and it's time, I won't just go through everything. So we could, with that, we could move to item six, C I one. Review and consider authorizing executive director to execute demonstration project access agreements. Um, so what we have in your packet today, so as part of component two, we uh the grant calls for demonstration projects where we can compare um meter production versus electrical records versus satellite ET estimate the groundwater production. And for the purposes of informing different uh the EMA GSA, understanding of different groundwater extraction measurement methodologies. Um, and to accomplish that, the scope includes installation of weather stations and or meters at specific properties. And so what we have in your agenda packet is two access agreements. Uh, one with Vogels and Vineyard and another with Rancho Canada Vineyard. Uh, one is for a new meter and that allows to compare satellite estimates to meter groundwater production at Vogels and Vineyard, as well as potentially electrical usage. And then the other one is a weather station at Rancho Canada Vineyard. Um, that will allow us to get very accurate on the ground. Evaporatranspiration data that we can calibrate the satellite data to improve its its accuracy. Um, and so these agreements have been vetted uh through the two property owners. One of them includes Director Circle, the Rancho Canada. It's uh, we went back and forth multiple times with uh legal representatives from the ag interests, because they, you know, so that we can get an agreement that ags would be comfortable signing. And that going through that effort has been really instrumental in getting other ag participants uh willing to enter into these types of agreements um in the EMA and and other major areas. Uh, and so both of these agreements have been signed by the property owners, and so we're just looking for the board's authorization to be executive director to sign them, and so that they're fully executed and we can move forward with the demonstration project.
And Dan, this is uh General Counsel Stephen O'Neil. I just recommend on the second of the access agreements, the one with Rancho Canata or Rancho Canada, that Director Circle abstained from that vote uh in an abundance of caution, so it, so there's no apparent uh appearance of conflict or suggestion of conflict. I'd recommend that he abstained only on that one. He's free to vote on the other one.
Sounds good. Okay, John.
Oh, so you're asking us to really sign off on the content of the agreement, um the process that you would be going to sign these. Are we also then uh giving you authorization to sign future ones, or will those come back to the board?
Yeah, so uh it is only these two agreements, the way it was conditioned. Yeah, um, we need to do three demonstration projects. We have two here with access agreements. The third admission project is uh Sunnyfield Park in Solvang. Um, we don't think we're gonna need an access agreement, but we're figuring that out, you know, uh because of the public park. Uh, but it is, there is a meter. Like, we don't think it needs to be calibrated, but if it does, so we'll we'll work through that, and if we need to, we'll bring it to the board. But hopefully, at least for component two, these are all the access agreements that we need. Now for component five and then the wells, there's potential need and access agreements for that, and those would come back.
And then, um, so do we have counsel on our, are all liability issues clear for us and for the property? Or that's been looked at?
Yes, what's been vetted back and forth, I think, four times, and it was like ten days down, it was twenty to start with, I think, but.
Uh, I think it's Steven.
Steve, Steven.
Steve.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we we went back and forth with counsel uh for one of the property owners to ensure that both sides got adequate protection. Because it's a, uh, you know, there it's just a a license, which is kind of the kind of the lightest property interest we can have. It's really a permission for us to go on, install this equipment and do whatever maintenance and monitoring we need to do. This is not an easement or any kind of real property interest. So it's kind of the lightest touch on the land, but it gives us the opportunity to install these facilities and take the readings we need to take. And in our view, uh, the language protects both the landowner and the district.
And I guess just a point, these access agreements are required by the grant, and there are certain provisions in the grant that we had incorporated in the grant.
I should probably abstain for both, because I was in a drafting.
Sure. Not far.
Okay. Um, okay. I vote to uh prove that.
The public comment?
Public alike comment on this? Nothing there? Okay, um, someone make a motion to accept will do for each one or both?
Yes. I I need that we uh authorize these agreements and our executive director to sign them. Go ahead.
So seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right.
I don't know.
They're pretty certain.
And before, you know, you mentioned Sunnyfields. Now, there was a well, I think, city dug a well and got sand in that area.
That's a duck, I was a, he was trying to borrow water.
I just understand that, but that's a good spot for a well, because that, because that was.
It still needs or as possible well location. We haven't done it completely, so it's still possible.
Yeah, but I just remembered, pumped bam, big time.
Yeah, so for that location for the demonstration project, it's just going to be a comparison of meter deliveries. As I understand, they did deliveries from ID one that are metered for the park, and so we can compare meter deliveries with satellite estimates of term evaporatranspiration. So, yeah, it won't, that demonstration project won't include a well, but still a data point for us to. All right, if I can just move quickly, so the the next item, we probably could have taken these together, but it's just a couple of environmental forms that we need to submit uh along with the demonstration projects. Um, we got a DWR requirement, um that's actually just one form, and then the legal challenges letter. Um, we, and so the intent is to submit these to DWR with the board's approval, and it's just one of the boxes we gotta check to put this for.
The motion, is that?
I, yeah.
I think just for the record, we always have to ask for public comment before we can do anything.
Public comment on that topic. Upward screen, very quiet. They're waiting for, you know, they're wanting to.
Okay, second mark's motion.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah.
Well, my gosh.
Okay, um, item six, C I three, um draft well registration and well metering and recording ordinance. So uh at the last meeting, we prevented an outline and a schedule. We might have a slide uh for preparation, the draft, this class, draft well registration and metering program. I'm gonna jump to the schedule. Um, we are, I believe, I don't know, actually ahead of schedule on this with uh bringing this draft, the draft ordinances to the board for consideration. Um, at this meeting, um, this is something that that the executive director staff uh developed based off of other uh well registration and metering ordinances. Um, we leaned heavily on the San Antonio basin, well registration and metering ordinances. That's very local, relevant. Um, uh, policy documents. Um, and so we're just bringing this, this. And so we're just bringing this, these ordinances today in draft form for the board's consideration to provide input. We're not adopting any ordinances, not for screening. It's just, we wanted to be responsive to the input and. Get an early opportunity for the board to review and provide input on these ordinances. Next steps would be to, I think we envisioned a workshop to either, you know, present this information to the public of interest. I think at the last meeting, the board requested that this go to the tag as a potential next step. And then ultimately would come back to the board for approval consideration. And their structure is two separate ordinances, one for registration, one for metering and reporting. The logic being that A, that they can be taken separate together. Also establishing registration program is a lot, can be done a lot sooner than. Establishing a metering program is significant, if you ask the board, question.
And that's, that's what we did in Los Alamos was went through the registration process, go at least know where everyone was. And they died down like that. And then the metering came, you know, quickly thereafter, but. Doing both together, it's got, you know, made a cross. Well, the metering one requires specific action. It may be difficult to get some people to take, so that's why not doing it together.
Little steps.
Yeah, progress.
Now, for these, did we have any information on? Type of meters that were going to be included? We had that one fellow come in, remember a couple of weeks ago? Shouldn't we have a standard that would want Matt, you know, that may be recommend certain types? You know, are we going to be able to have that information and then?
So this one's vague on that. And that's, I think this was after the Los Alamos. And there, the conclusion they came to after debating it was. Does anybody have meter that met the accuracy standard set forth here? They weren't given the requirement, we replaced it with a meter for somebody else. Since a lot of meters are old, they just want verification that they were functioning. And so they allowed to intentionally. Say to accommodate all of that. I think it's also true that if we ask people to get meters, suggesting meters, they wouldn't meet. Because, you know, the standards that we have, it's a little bit opaque by the numbers. If they get this, they don't know what to do and they call the. Vendor supplier. First question he's going to ask is, you know, what, what brand do you want? So anyway, those are two different approaches.
Okay, but, but we're going to need standards and there will be a timeframe that will be continually checked. So everyone's on the same playing field. And I think we're going to need that kind of standardization certification of whatever it is of these.
I've seen it done both ways, you know, whether you even call out five different meters, you know, with. You ask people to use those, Los Alamos, you know, it's a different approach. They didn't want to ask people to do it if they already had one that was functioning.
Right, it's a bit our standards that require. I think that, I think something's out there. It's not in a lot of places where you do like that.
Require calibration of the meters?
Right.
Didn't there?
Yeah, that's what you're talking about. Few, no, it's been five years because we.
Yeah, we think it's true.
But I mean, in other basics, it's close to one.
And then like who's doing the calibration? Is there a certain agency, a certain tech out there, certified tech that does these things?
I'm not exactly sure about the certification, but I mean, the well company companies have, we don't need to do any, we got some.
Yeah, Dan, could you check on that certification of the meters? Because in your circle, you know, there's, let's don't reinvent the wheel. Must be people out there that certify meters.
Yeah, yeah, I, there, there are. And actually, we're going to work with some calibration specialists. As part of component two of the grant for the demonstration projects. And so I'm sure they'll have some good information to share. Yeah, I think the draft ordinance where speaks to calibration, you know, sort of in frequency. In accordance with the manufacturer specifications, but maybe even for the lean on those. Would be one approach where we can establish any specific frequency for calibration. Some sort of guidelines for who can fault plan to do that.
And then for going on the people's property, you're going to have some approval, you know. You have to be some process for that going on.
Yeah, I, I would assume that this is sort of a stealth administered program, but I don't. Well, I shouldn't assume it's up for the board, but I don't know if the EMA GSA would be hiring the calibration folks or if. They would, you know, prior, get a certification of calibration and then submit it to the GSA as verification.
That's something I think we should scotch that out.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't. Devils in the details with these things.
I thought it was, I saw it someplace. They had you sign up for it. You had to agree to allow someone onto the site to measure if you could.
Is that true, Dan?
Uh, you know, I'm not.
Maybe, maybe our attorney knows if we have that legal authority, talking about statewide.
So I was looking for.
Yeah, most of the others have software reporting and then a certificate on some frequency. And, and you know, oftentimes they figure out the framework and they'll leave themselves for it. And they estimate until they get it prepared.
Yeah, I mean, so it's a draft policy here. Obviously, this is, we wanted to get something out there for the board and the public and stakeholders to be able to review and provide input on it. So this is all great questions and additional detail that we can work through. Before bringing back something for formal consideration.
You guys have your own questions?
Public Mary.
Uh, Dan, I'm a little bit, just want to making sure that I understand some of the well registration. After the definitions, it's the existing groundwater wells. So all groundwater extraction facilities will be located within the boundaries of the EMA. Except the river extractors, but including the de minimis. So the de minimis would have to register. But it is for the result registration.
That was the intent. We want to know how many wells are out there. Yeah. It's maybe the language is a little rough, but we want to be clear. It's not the river extractors. Based on, you know, how that's defined would just be, but it is de minimis. And we, yeah.
And then going on then to the second ordinance, the de minimis would not have to meter and it would not have to.
That is correct.
Um, thank you.
Uh, I just, uh, concerning the self-reporting. Maybe some sort of an audit program that can cycle through. And get, you know, a selection, some sample of the reporting orders. This might be enough of motivation for people to be, you know, to be reporting on time and to be reporting accurately and so forth. They know that it will be checked. That we don't need to worry about so much, you know, kind of going on, people probably using marine for ourselves kind of thing. So it's something to think about.
Good idea. It's got to be some kind of checks and balance to just keep them steady.
Yeah.
But I think if we hired, then we need an access agreement to go on to someone's front of property. It's usually the reason that's avoided.
Yeah, sometimes the authorizing legislation use that authority. So I just think we should check that out. You can put it in the, with no good, just go on with that.
Yeah, I think there, there are other potential checks and balances, you know. The demonstration project will give us an assessment for how accurate satellite ET estimates are. And, you know, so that's data that'll be available to ubiquitous for the entire basin. That can be compared against reported values, you know, not to match exactly, but if they're dramatically off. And there's not some other source of water providing for that field, that could be our flag that could call it up on.
Then once again, I go back, don't reinvent wells. Other agencies, they're doing this. So let's see what, what they're doing for checks and balances, you know, they must have a system.
Yeah, Oxonard Basin, right, or I think it's a specific basin name. Fox Canyon, you know, they've been doing these types of activities for a number of years.
Yeah, most of those wells are in two basins. And so they're reporting to two bases, so. Fox Canyon and United. But in that particular case. They actually got a camera on top of the well. Then an automated takes a picture on the first of every month. Of what the meter reading is. So they know if the meter's not running. It's more expensive, you know. But, you know, they get knocked around and they need to be repaired and so forth. But at least they get a better handle on what's actually happening, what's happening. Felt it will be resistant to air, so.
Yeah, if you go on the United Water Conservation Tour, probably you'll get opportunity to ask questions about how they're handling. Calibration, verification, those types of things.
Anything else for that item?
Uh, not really. I, I mean, I think that was great, great conversation. Yeah, we'll take that input, you know, we'll consider modification, we'll research other. Basins for how they're handling the components that have been brought up. We need to sort of think about the next steps for this. I, you know, I think we can definitely take it to the CAG if that's. And I think this would be good. Our first CAG meeting was pretty high level, kind of getting everybody up to speed and introducing ourselves. This would be a nice, we'll take something a little more meat for them to review and provide input. And then. I think we call out a workshop. I think it'd probably be good to coordinate if we're going to do a public workshop with some of the other initiatives that are ongoing. So we'll, we can coordinate to figure it out. Are we ready for component three? I think so, yeah. I think we got public comments. Maybe just online if there's any public comment.
See anything?
No, okay. Thanks for the input. All right, so component three is the rate study. And you'll finally get a break from having to listen to these meetings, so we're going to have a presentation. From Sangee, who are, how do you translate as R? Gar. With Water Research, Sangee Ng. The President, Marvin Gerg, that public director of the EMA. You actually have some to do. The presentation to go separate for at the point where we need direction about which way to go forward. So no question, sorry. During my presentation, if you have some comments, questions, interrupt me, we'll start a dialogue or start a discussion. Let's make the right decision for the EMA. And that's why I say, so the agenda today is the goal of the study and talk about the goal and what today's goal is, you know, we do have the goal. One is briefly remind us about the financial conditions of the EMA. And then options that we have for determination. We have two paths. We've met with stakeholders. We've talked to the, the agencies that heard from them to provide us direction about two options out there, two of the visions. We want to get your input about what those visions, what would make sense. You may have other visions and we definitely want to get that too. And then the fee, the policy considerations, the next steps and criteria. So the goal today is really about developing a fee because of operation. That's the bottom, which is what is the right way of assessing that fee? Methodology of the fee. So first we need to know what's the cost. We actually have that. I'm not presenting that today, but we do have some cost estimates about running the GSA. Over three to five years. But before I start showing that, I want to know how we're going to do it. Because that's really the question, the how. Because that has a timing element associated with it. So we want, and then we also want to know what data is available. We've been working with the energy staff on that. Once we understand, we, we have a sort of a good understanding, I believe, about the data available, then we want to develop. A fee that has the board adopt that. That can be three to five years. So that's something to think about too. I recommend, you know, more is better usually. Definitely want to have engagement with the community about the study, hear from them about what makes sense from the community. And then of course, we want an adoption, successful adoption. So as I mentioned, there is the direction that we are looking for from the board. And we really have like certainly two vision. And it's really about how do we assess this fee, given that we're a new agency and administrative costs. One approach, put this on the county. And there's pros and cons with each of these approaches. And there's not, I'm not here advocating one or the other. Here to hear from you, which one you think makes sense. So one is to put on the property roll for that in the demo. Basically, we have that these fees adopted by July first. We also have to start, start that process, have an account with the county. And then we give that information and then the county gets it in the audit and then it goes on the property roll. So that's one approach. Or if we could have a little bit more breathing room and start January first. But then we would have to do direct billing. We do have two groups of customers, we feel like, one that we've got relatively easy to get revenue from because they're municipal and the MAs. On the mutuals. And then we have the individual that, and those are the ones that are, how do we do the that? How do we bill those individuals? So that's just sort of the first policy. And then the second one is about, then how do we charge? What, what makes sense in our community? We went back and forth about different methodologies. I'll show those slides. And second, but really we boiled down to two methodologies. One is based on estimated water use. We have data. We know the cost coefficient. We know the ET weather. We can estimate what people use. Yes, there might be some inaccuracy there. We acknowledge that, but we can do an average. We can do a three-year average, a two-year average. We can provide that data to the individual customer so that they can verify and they can have a, a validation process. But that needs time for, you know, the other ones we can do separate for. Another option too. And there's pros and cons with each one of these approaches. So the current condition is that the GSA has received loan from the Department of State and the agency currently around $200,000. And, you know, whenever I do these studies, it's really the financial that sort of drives the agenda. Some GSAs are fortunate in that they have participant agencies that are willing to help be the bank and provide that loan. But I mean, we're not asking the participant agency to give the money. It's a loan that'll get paid back. But it, you know, some have that, some don't. And so that drives the study. And the, and the time that we have, the more time we have, the more we can be thorough and more thoughtful we can. But sometimes we don't have that luxury. So the question to ask is really, you know, our, you know, we, we feel like we, we need to have something a doctor with it in the year, given the current situation we are. I want to say here by January first. And if we don't meet that January first, then we'll need additional loans. And so that's sort of where the, you know, rubber meets the concrete or, you know, the term is that we need to know. Do we have that luxury or not? Or do we need to really be focused and get this done this year? So what are the options of administering this fee? And as I mentioned, there's two options that we have on the table. The first is that we can put this on the county. And there's pros and cons. So it's been on the county. The one thing nice about being on the county is that you will pretty much get the money. You get the money twice a year. You know, some, you know, people pay their property because there's a lien on the property. So you're going to get it for sure. We did found out, thank you from the, from some staff, that the county charges basically, it looks like a dollar per parcel. Is our understanding. Right now we're still confirming that. So that costs isn't that much. And since from administrative costs, right, it's a dollar, the sending of postage is. You know, by, I mean, friends of the staff, more than a dollar. So, so that's the good thing about that. Another one is that we can send it directly to the customers. And that's what the Conservation District does right now. And they do a self-report. They can send that out twice a year. Customers put common water they use, they, from my understanding, you know. Um, and they do a self-reporting, they can send that out twice a year, um, customers put common water they use, they, from my understanding, you know, if they calculate the bill. Um, then the staff needs to then verify that, and there's a cost with that verification. Um, I'm concerned about math, some people made that to the math correctly, or whatever, so there's a lot of processing that needs to be done to make sure all the collections may be a concern or not. I don't, if, if you have any, okay, you got it, I got it, sorry.
So, so, yes. Okay, I see up there, 100% collection, you know, it's like, that's a pretty high percentage, is that what it is, they can get 100%?
Well, I mean, if you don't pay it, then you get a lien on your property, right, and then, and then, uh, and then the county can sell it.
Okay, but now who pays for all of that process, to go through the liens and trying to do collections, is that for that same dollar that we pay?
Uh, that's a good question, I, I would suspect that, because if you don't pay, you don't, usually when you pay your, your, it's the property tax, right? And the property, within the property tax, there's all the different assessments and different other things, initiatives. Um, and if someone usually doesn't pay the whole thing, then they're, the county could put a lien on the property.
So depending on the lien, and then before the county just puts it in the mail, someone's gotta tell them what to put on there.
Exactly.
How much does that cost, and who's doing that?
So we would do, we would help, we would work with Dan and his staff and determine in our scope. We would put in, um, all, so we would even know the, the, um, estimated, most likely, so one of the things about the county is that. We're gonna, we would have to use the data, we would have to use data today to determine next year's bill. So it's, it's historical data, not current data, right, it's not, I, I don't, I can't predict what someone's gonna come, right, so I have to do estimated water. So we have to determine, you know, is it two-year, or three-year average, or five-year average, what, what's the right average? Um, we would work with Dan and his G I S staff, we determine the eight, each A P N number, the estimated water use. We would have that data for each parcel, then I would suggest that we send that information to each parcel, you work it on the county. Let them know, this is what we estimated your water use to, have an opportunity for each parcel owner to protest that. Yeah, through the window though, you know, maybe a, a month, maybe two weeks, three weeks, where they can, they can say, if it's, if they don't say anything, then we assume it's correct.
Right.
And then we put that information in an Excel spreadsheet with an A P N number, the, the amount that needs to be charged. And we would, and we would provide that to Dan, and Dan, and the staff would provide that to the county.
And then you're gonna be doing a lot of work to get it to the county, to figure this out, so they can put it on the bill. So, how much is that gonna cost, do you have to have a consultant do that, are you gonna do that?
You know, there, there's a lot of details to be figured out, um, I mean.
Well, we gotta make a decision, it sounds like, so what's in the detail?
Yeah, four months. Um. Yeah, I mean, we have. We have done delivery investigation, we don't have cost estimates for what it would take, but I mean, the reality is. I mean, we've been talking with GSI, who does the estimates of groundwater pumping right now. Uh, we have it by farming unit, you would need to intersect that by parcel, which is, you know, relatively easily done. And in G I S, there'd be a little bit of cleanup, and you would have your estimate of groundwater pumped. Uh, at least for the ag users from that exercise, with, you know, not a ton of effort, you know? Um, and then, I mean, your rural residential presumably is de minimis, so they're not included in this, your mutuals would be direct billed. Similar to your, your water utility side, I, I don't see it as needing to be that extensive of an exercise, uh, to come up with those estimates, so.
It has to be advised.
So we.
July, what's July?
July 1st need to be adopted on that.
That goes into effect within the fiscal year.
Correct, and then we provide the data in August, so in theory, um, you could have the, um, the venting of the data up till. In, in, in July 2nd, and, and before August, but you could have that, I, I would prefer we did it before. So I really know the number of quantity, so I know that's the amount of revenue it's reflecting is correct. Uh, but it, it needed to, so that means that we may under color revenue, because people, of course, people complain, people will correct it to lower, not to increase it.
Yeah.
I expect to get a lot of comments back, you know, people get, because the other approach is self-reporting, which is even more complicated. Yeah.
Are you asking us to make this decision tonight, given that we have not all the information about the costs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go through more, I'm sorry, but yes, I, I think in a sense, because if we want to meet the counting, and I'm gonna show you the schedule, it's very impressive.
Right.
That's the challenge, right, because it's, it's such July 1st, and because of the adoption process. Um, most likely, we would go through a Prop 218 process, that's a 45-day notice. We may even go on to, there's an exhaustive remedies approach, where you spend that a little bit, and then, uh, it sort of limits lawsuits. I would suggest we do that, so that makes it 60 days, so there's a, uh, and then we want to have stakeholder, you know, and so there's a lot of things that need to occur. In order to meet that, so that's that, perhaps, that I was saying earlier about the financial, and if we have more money, then we have a little more luxury, we have more time. But sometimes, you know, pressure is good, right, I mean, this is the, the thing, sometimes we, we make those hard decisions now, and we're gonna move forward.
But we really can't compare costs, given the information that we have today, that would have been relevant to my decision had I had that.
Yeah, and so, I, we're not trying to force the board into a decision, what we wanted to do with this schedule is that, you know, we wanted the board to have the option. To meet that first earliest deadline, and because we didn't bring this as quick as we could, you wouldn't have that option. But we can understand that you don't want to make that decision to meet that, that's fine, like the, you know, it's something described. It, it could require some additional loans from the member agencies to allow, you know, some, some more time in the process, as Sanjay describes. But we didn't want to take that option away from the board, uh, by not, you know, having Sanjay here tonight and providing the presentation.
Yeah, so you're gonna go through the, the details, and then we can see if the critical path is achievable or not.
So, I have a question, like, I've seen it also where it's a combination, um, you know, there's a flat fee per parcel that goes on the tax, on the property tax roll. It generates, you know, half the money, and the other half, you know, comes from pumping, and then if we get meters, you know, you can reduce that, or, you know, change it to the actual, but. Um, so that, that way, if, if you have the same, you know, if you have a fixed fee, and it's over a broad base, we can bring in the funding we need. And it's not gonna be a huge burden on any one person, you know, that may be a way to not have a pushback.
Yes, and that's an option that we have, and we presented it, is that we could do it either by parcel or by acreage. Um, we did have a lengthy discussion about the framework associated with that, and there's a lot of interesting case law there, I'm an attorney, so, let the attorney, um. Talk about that a little more, but if we didn't want to, first, um, the participants that we heard from Dan. I, I didn't think they expressed the desire to do that by parcel or by acreage, that's at least the feeling I got, if you can correct me here. Yeah, I mean, we've had quite a bit of discussion around this, and it's a complicated issue. I, let's just face it, there's a number of considerations, and we want to come up with something that's equitable and achieves the objectives. One of, one of the things we, we've looked at a number of other basins and seen how they have approached it, and I think one of the challenges that we have with the EMA is. We're not a basin that is predominantly one type of groundwater user, we have a pretty, it's still, you know, maybe more ag than municipal. But there's significant municipals, mutual water company, rural residential, other uses, and so trying to kind of find a mechanism. That equitably charges everybody is challenging, when you, you start talking about acreage, but they don't necessarily own acres, but they use groundwater, and. And so, I think one of the reasons there is a kind of a gravitation towards a per acre foot charge is it, it's pretty easy to, to see the equity and, you know. Who's using groundwater, and who's bank? Uh, and it, it allows you to apply it pretty evenly to municipal, uh, utility, and, and then I go rural residential. Whereas you're, and you're not mixing like, well, you're getting charged based on acreage, you're getting charged based on acre feet, and how do we. Right, you know, bring, you know, meld those together, so that, that, that was, I think, what a lot of it, and then the, some of the legal issues associated with the sort of land use. Yeah, I think that's the other concern.
Yeah.
A couple of questions, but I guess, um, for Bill, how, how big is the issue of people not paying, you having to scour after them?
It's a constant.
It is, so it's a big nuisance, so I think that that argues, in my mind, at least trying to, to do this on the county schedule, we, we could change it. But to keep that option open, I think would be a wise.
Because the same data that we need to gather for the county would also apply to us, and so it's not like two different data sets.
No, no, it just needs to have to hurry.
So.
And that's why, you know, it'd be us, the Dan's, uh, can you, and, uh, gee?
Yeah, so I don't know whether it would be us, but, you know, somebody familiar, GSI is currently the ones manipulating the data i- in that sense. For the, the ag demand estimates, um.
And can they do that in a timely fashion, July? You, you nod, yeah.
I, I, I welcome to most of GSI's, um, are we talking about if you add water use, and that applied that to a parcel basis, or would it be easier?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but with that in principle.
Look, I'm good.
Right.
I'm lost, will you hear that, or, will you try? You got me, somebody else started building.
Right, so, so it's a ball, we'll talk about it in a second.
Okay, so then, yeah, I'm sorry that I started my question, I interrupted you.
No, 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 thank you, this is good, and this is what I want. Um, so, so, so I, I, I hear something here, so that's good, so go to the next slide. Um, so who are our customers, so whenever I do a G S A study, I always want to know who's pumping, because every agent, it's a, these are really interesting studies, because. Everyone, you know, you either have a very large farmer, that might be only a couple of large entities, you may have more municipal, you may have more mutual. So we want to know who those are, basically, have municipals, mutual, rural, domestic, and ag. Um, as Dan mentioned, the municipal and the mutual, those ones are relatively easy, we know how much they pump, we should just charge them based on what they pump, that's. And really, the challenge here, and what we're talking about today, is rural, not like an app, and how do we build those individuals, those end users? So, an end user in a municipal or mutual wouldn't receive a bill from the EMA. Because it'll, they'll be billed directly to the entity, and then the entity would absorb that cost, and then it'll put that in their bills. Okay?
But in both cases, you say we could build the end user.
Yes, we're building the end user, oh yeah, we could build end user for the mutual, but our recommendation is not to. Our recommendation is to build the municipal, build that entity.
For us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, yeah, I mean, the other side is, from, from my perspective, encouraging conservation is, is important.
Correct.
Well, and that's why I'm brought in this, uh, exposure, wherever that pays a little, at least it brings awareness to conservation, which we don't really have now. And then I think another factor is like in, in Los Alamos, we charge $50 an acre, an irrigated acre, 50 cents, I think it is, I don't quote me exactly, but. You know, for non-irrigated cattle around, and, uh, and that brought the money in runway, because it takes, I mean, there it's taking, Utah, because. Call them, but it's taken two or three years, and then it's now getting the metering in place, and so I think the metering. Will take longer than we might think, and way longer than the timeframe you're discussing, so I think we may have a two-step solution.
Exactly, yeah.
That's, and that's what it's, so like, that's how usually it is, the first step is just, let's get, keep the lights on. How do we find, and just have the lights on, now we have the lights on, now we can start talking a little bit about, okay, now how do we incentivize conservation? Do we need to bring new water into the basin, how, all of, and then that, another.
God, I can speak to conservation from I D one, our water amount has dropped dramatically.
Water, water use.
Water use has dropped dramatically, we're not even back up even close to 15 years ago, when the pump boil when the drought hit. Everybody's got active, they pulled lawns out, they did everything, it is now way better.
Now, well said, two wet winters, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, on top of water. Yeah, ten years, we can provide David, this, to show you guys, that the public's buried conservation minds.
Um, actually, the next slide, um, shows that, so we go to the base, and that's the estimated groundwater correction. We have the municipal, mutual, rural ag, and total, so there's a couple of things here that are interesting from my perspective, first, the percentage. Like who are the larger users of rural domestic, as Dan mentioned, there is a significant amount from the municipal, mutual, basically 20%. So, our recommendation is that we build those people based on the water use, and that 80% that will be billed directly to rural domestic. The second thing that's interesting is if you look at the totals and the fluctuations in the pumping, and it varies significantly. So, what that means is, of course, is the weather, right, the weather dictates how much people pump or not, and that fluctuation. Can have a significant revenue instability toward the EMA. And so that's why I'm, that's, for my, you know, I, I, I do buy conservation, but I'm a bit concerned about that revenue instability. And given that this is a new agency, I, I, I try to look at it like a baby, you know, so trying to walk, um, it doesn't have good solid feet yet. Um, that, you know, we, we should try to think of it as like a fixed charge, like a, a historical rolling average. And I would suggest, some, I originally suggested five years, I got pushed back, because people felt like that was not enough for, for modern conservation. So maybe we should do three-year, but that represents, that would actually done, maybe do a three-year rolling average, um, but something like that, where we would do an average, or begins.
Oh, I'm sorry, five years makes more sense, given the two years that we had that were so out of the ordinary to me.
Yeah, I like four years, but this is, this is really up to you, as a policy of, you know, is it, there's not a right answer here, is it five years, is it three years? You could do two years, but, you know, I mean, what, what do you think is more, you're more comfortable with?
Yeah, five.
Okay. Well, I, I think there's, there's two things to, to factor in here when we talk about the number of years, there's. How many years do we want to look at the data for establishing the rate, dollars per acre foot? And then, when the five-year average captures a, a, a more variation than hydrologic cycles, and, and so, but then there's. So that's the, what, how many dollars per acre foot are we charging, but then there's, what are we charging on an annual basis? It's that dollars per acre foot times some amount of groundwater use, and you want to use a five-year average for that amount of groundwater use, or a shorter rolling average? Um, just because I, you know, it's, we want to encourage conservation.
Right.
And so if somebody's gonna take land out of, you know, uh, production, we want them to be rewarded for that, and so, maybe a shorter rolling average.
So the five-year rule capture that?
It wouldn't, it, it, it wouldn't capture it as significantly, yeah.
Well, and also, we need to control our costs in the EMA, so that the numbers aren't, you know, as big as, as represented here compared to other basins. These are some pretty big numbers, and it's, and of course, the budget, I'd use a million dollars for, for this purpose, but. The last time we looked at it was, was 625.
It, it jumped up and down, you know, there's some big dollar items with the, the G S B update, none of the things, and so, and then the. The grant fund makes you the budget for the first couple of years, so like, you know, I think it's longer term, it, it was a little bit, but, you know, it was uncertain. Yeah, and there's also two other elements, one is the loan, repayment of the loan, and the second one is that we are recommending, over time, to build up a reserve. So, for instance, we, if we go on the county, um, the one challenge with the county is, is that you only receive the money twice a year. So there's a cash flow, because your payments are not gonna be twice a year, your payments are gonna be bi-weekly, or one, or every two week, you know, bi-monthly, or whatever. So, you're gonna have payments, so you need to have money up, so that you can draw down for six months.
Yeah, well, I think, once you have meters and you're billing, you know, the, I mean, pumping fee, you're still gonna have the fluctuation that we're talking about. We also want to encourage the conservation, and that's the only way to do that, is on, on break, but then it's going to take some. You know, while we get the meters in place, and I'm foolish to think that will happen fast.
Yeah, and then, you know, there's some other thoughts out there, I mean, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but like, you know, should everyone have a, like, what's the S A P O? You know, what's that amount, you know, and, and, and looking at that also in, in the rate structure, so instead of, I do stay within the S A P O. I don't know. Those, but that's again, when we're teenagers, right now, we're in the baby stage. Um, so we go to the next line, and the next line basically shows the different options that we. Um, so we go to the next slide, and the next slide basically shows the different options that we had, and we did, um, you know, mention, so the one is by parcel, you know, we did by parcel, that's easy to implement, provide revenue stability. There is some equity concerns, of course, because everything, all parcels are the same, um, that necessarily may have people who have grain land, um, you know, cattle, and they don't irrigate it all. Um, the other one is by acreage, um, again, easy to implement, provide revenue stability, again, uh, another concern, that equity concern, that some people got a very large parcel that's made of, not doing anything with that land, pasture land, um, and should they be charged, all that, and, you know, so there's some challenges with that. So the other two approaches are the ones that we gravitated towards, which was groundwater extraction based on estimated use. If we did that average, I had mentioned, like, five years, that would create the revenue stability, um, shorter could provide some sense for conserving. Um, there is some data that needs to be processed, um, and, um, if we use one year, that would cause revenue stability, so I would recommend a average, I like, maybe five years, um, is good. We could also do self-reporting, um, or, because we don't have the actual pumping that's occurring, um, to reflect what's occurring at that time period, we, what the crops are being grown. Um, the great incentive for pumpers to conserve, there are some concerns about gaming though, right, people may game the system, um, not all, but some, um, may cause revenue stability, um, due to the fluctuation of reporting and data. So our, you know, we sort of lean slightly towards groundwater extraction, um, but I definitely wanted to hear from the board, um, if that makes sense, because then we would wanna start, you know, tend to get the data, process it, um, look at maybe either five or three years rolling average, and start estimating what that is. Have they, except the, I don't know, with one you like in this one?
Phase one, it's ready.
Yeah, I like to say, say what you thought, hey, let's just pump.
I, I like the groundwater extraction estimate, because I, I do worry about people gaming the system, especially when this is just new.
So you like the meter type, it's meter what you pump, what you pay.
Oh, we estimate, and then we meter.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need a stopgap solution to find now, and I think it's pretty certain based on what I've seen in other basins, that it's gonna take two years to get meters in place, and that's we have to have, we have to have kind of one solution that gets us to, to the two-year mark, and maybe that's the self-reporting, because it's be done quickly, and a certain number are already doing it for the parent district, so, um, yeah, if I'm the, uh, you know, pay for what you pump, but I'm, so it's gonna have to be estimated, or we're gonna be.
That's until all the pump, all the meters are in.
Yeah, but at least you're consistent, though, you're, everybody understands that kind of roll over, and it's kind of a phased approach, given that maybe some of the, the white space don't, don't have that in place, but I kind of doubt it, I think they've gotten all the branding messaging on what they're thinking.
I don't, in Kuyama, Matt, I'm not familiar with all the Kuyama situation, but, um, I know they, they tried a temporary one, and then the users wanted meters, is that factual?
Sure, yeah, through the chair, uh, Matt Young, San Barbara County Water Agency, yeah, in Kuyama. Uh, initially, they did it, they estimated water use using land IQ, satellite ET data, and everybody hated it so much, they, they read the meters, uh, and put meters on very quickly.
Perfect. Okay, now let's go to Mary.
Yeah, can you do more than just one of these? So where I'm coming from, it, to wake up everybody, and the fact that everyone is gonna bank it um, from having a sustainably managed reason. Can we do a, a flat parcel fee for everybody? And that would include the municipal that, you know, are out there, and that are really not doing anything. Um, and then also on the top of that, do a groundwater extraction, um, or do you estimate, so can we do two?
We could do both if we wanted to. If we did the parcel one, uh, I would recommend that we would have an option for people to opt out, so they could say that I don't have a well.
Yeah, but they're still benefiting, right, I mean, it doesn't have to be an exorbitant, huge amount, but I think just to make people aware, that, I mean, there's so many people that don't still know what sigma is.
I, I, I agree with that logic, the, the, the challenge, and, you know, that, Steve, I'll talk about this, it's the legal framework. There's, it, there gets into minutia of these laws, and unfortunately, it's very muddy.
So can you do a twenty, and a two eighteen, at the same time, or no?
If, if, if I, if I could jump in, Sanjay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the issues, Director, that the flat fee, uh, parcel charge cha- uh, faces is that it's a, it makes it a more tenuous nexus between what they're paying and what they're getting. Because, you know, all these, uh, constitutional amendments that have, uh, been generated over the years from proposition two eight thirteen to two eighteen to twenty-six, they're all trying to kind of tighten the nexus between what someone is paying uh, and what benefit they are receiving. Uh, and we, we had a discussion on this, uh, earlier this week, um, and you know, in our view, the, the, the closest nexus we can tie is to levy a fee on groundwater extractors. Because there's clearly a nexus, they're taking groundwater from the basin, putting it to a use, they should pay. If someone is not taking, um, any groundwater, you know, arguably, there is a kind of a, a benefits, but I argue a little more tenuous, uh, in that they are getting, um, the benefits of sitting atop of a groundwater basin that's healthy and sustainable, um, even though they're not pumping. Uh, but, uh, that does pose, well, open the door perhaps to someone come, come in and complain, hey, I'm paying a parcel tax, and I'm getting very little benefit out of it, and what I'm paying exceeds the benefit that I'm getting. So, um, uh, I just wanted to offer those comments, because, uh, in, in my view, the, the cleanest and safest approach, and most conservative approach would be to levy on groundwater extraction. But I can tell you that, uh, 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 similar to Sanjay's compliment, uh, comment, this is not a black and white area of the law, there's been a lot of litigation, uh, concerning this, and, uh, we'll continue to see it, but I just wanted to offer those observations.
Minister Chair, um, could I make a comment from the public when it's appropriate?
Sure, and we're in public comments, so go ahead.
Oh, thanks, so, uh, I'm Steve Anderson again, representing ID one. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that here, three months ago, there was a legal challenge to a sigma per parcel fee up in Tahima County. Um, and, and the judge, uh, ruled against that fee, and found that it was, it was an unconstitutional tax that hadn't been approved by the voters. He then, just about three weeks ago, held a hearing on the remedy, and even though the challenge had been brought by a single landowner, and it really was a small fee, it was only about thirty cents a parcel uh, to pay for some administrative costs of the GSA up there. Uh, the judge ruled that all the fees collected needed to be, needed to be refunded across the board, not just to the plaintiff, landowner who challenged, but to every fee that had been collected by that GSA, so he ordered the disgorgement of all that money. Um, that is a trial court decision, um, it's not binding in our, in our area, because it's from Nor- NorCal, but, uh, you know, that, that's what one, uh, judge viewed as the, as a per parcel tax as being unconstitutional as, uh, uh, and a tax, so just, just wanted to note that for you all. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, that's a, yeah, there's a precedent.
So, I, I really like Mary's idea, but I guess I'm persuaded that we don't wanna get in trouble, especially early on. But I think I hear a difference on, on the board between the estimated versus the self-reporting. So I, I, I favor the estimated, I think it's, um, I, I just think as we start, that it, um, it gives us kind of an objective.
Yeah, but, but some people are already measuring, and so they're gonna wanna continue to self-report, they currently do that with parent history, and so they, they're gonna look at that as.
But could they take their self, you know, reporting, they know what they're getting, and then we get this new estimation, and then they have a chance to talk.
Right.
To see.
So then we get lots of.
It's gonna be back and forth, right?
Yeah, so we could have like a PL or variance product, we need to figure that out, of course. And then, um, but if, you know, we work with Dan, I'll bring him out, but there needs to be a business process, where it would give every customer the opportunity to know what the fee would be about, and then they could provide um, some information, maybe based on self-reporting, or different crops, you know, I, I would wanna be like, you know, when we look at the GIS, actually show them, this is what we, we see that you've grown, these are the different crops. If you think you recruit a different crop, let us know, or, you know, I mean, yeah, like, instead of just saying, no, I didn't, you know, I mean, that's be the
with, with the estimated, no, we may be going down the same path of Kuyama, where we're on the high side, we, we say this is what we think it is, and they're gonna come back, so now I got actuals, or they're gonna go get meters, and they're gonna have actuals, so they can.
But that's good.
Yeah, north.
Yeah, we, we, we know the basins where, you know, there's an estimated value, and if you don't like it, you, you can show a metered value, and, and they'll accept it.
Yeah, right. But just, it's wrong, you know, a little more concept, like in the, in the Pachola and Imperial Valley, where we get Colorado River water, there, there's a certain cost to operate the system, and that cost, you know, you know, per acre foot charge goes on your, your tax wall. And so it's really only intended to cover the kind of half of the operating cost, just the fixed cost to maintain the, the facilities. And then, when you exceed what you've been billed, you, you, you pay that minimum, whether you use water or not, but most people use more than that. And then there's a, you know, reporting to the balance.
So that, not conservation, use it no matter what.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, it's, well, no, that.
That kind of sounds like what I've been hearing from the government.
Yeah, it's like forty, fifty years ago, the government said, we just want a tax bill to cover our fixed cost. So that's the way they structured it, so the conservation comes above that. It's basically half of what you use.
Would that be the baby or the teenager, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I feel a little more sophisticated, it's, yeah, we wanna right now, just get enough money. I would recommend like a, sort of like a fixed card on the property roll. Um, fixed in a sense that is based on either historical use, or we could do it based on actual use that occurred that year, if they have that data. I, I don't know how we know if that's actually pumped that year, I don't know how you would verify that, I don't know if anyone here knows how you do that, but.
Are, are you talking about the estimated through satellites, or?
So I'm a customer, you told me I use three, my, my three-year rolling average is, is three acres, um, three, three, three acre feet. Now, you, I, but last year I actually pumped only two. How do I verify that I, and I wanna use that number, how would, could we do that, I don't know if we can do that.
Well, I mean, I think that the satellite ET estimates have fixed duration, so based on the satellite data that we have from, I don't know, October through September, this is the estimate of the water, so it's, it's tied to a point in time.
Yeah, okay. Very.
Yeah, so Dan, how does that work? Cause, you know, there's people that just, uh, plant during the summertime, or, you know, even like dry cropping, right, where they don't use any irrigation, but it's coming out, and it looks green, and so there's probably something about transportation with green cover during that time, so how do they, do they take certain data points throughout the year to then be able to know that, oh, okay, yeah, it was pretty green, you know, between February and May, but it was pretty brown for the rest of the time, you know what I mean?
Yeah, my, so satellites are there about us all the time right now, so my understanding, you know, I'm not an expert in this, but I, you know, have enough experience, so it's, it's every two weeks, it, it's, I believe, the cycle that they're coming over, and they're, they're not just measuring green, they're measuring the volume of, of leaf cover, and so, and then they're estimating groundwater use proportional to that volume, so the volume, when the, you know, the plants are small, is gonna be lower, and then as they grow, they estimate additional, uh, water usage, so I mean, it's, there's a lot of data that they're collecting that goes into that.
Dan.
I would add, just to, to, to make it better, but it also subtracts out precipitation. So if it rains and it's wet, and then things are growing, it's gonna ignore that, it'll also track that out, so. But it, it's growing, but then if it grows, it won't catch that. And, and I think, um, the day we use sunrise, there is a month, it should take the twelve months. But Dan.
Any other public questions? We'll go to the next slide, which is the option. Um, you know, option one, to put this on the property roll, as I mentioned, um, we know relative terms, right? Easy implement relativity, um, reduce administrative burden, you know, we get the money. Um, it's an inflexible schedule bill, that's the challenge, yeah, it's July first, there's some things that need to occur, we need to register with the county, that needs to happen right away, there's some processing, we need to get the, once they get adopted, we have to get the data to the county by August, um, and we can only use historical data, we can't do self-reporting, it has to be, you know, so we're using that data that we have, and, which sounds really good, uh, but we have to use that GIS data. Um, if we do direct billing, um, then we can receive, and then, and of course, with the county, we only get the revenue twice a year, as I mentioned. Would we do direct billing, we could bill more frequently, we can control the revenue more, uh, quicker. Um, we can use current data, but, you know, my concern is, is getting the money, people will automatically write the check, that's a concern that I have, um, and administrative burden of running the program, if, you know, you're small, sending out bills, that's a lot of work there.
How do you define billing a customer for a municipality? Each individual resident in the city?
So we know how much they pump municipality, so we just, we would just build the municipality.
You build the municipality, and then you know it's a spread to them.
Yes, that's, I'd say, I think what they, we, they use. You know, it's not much each person use.
We owe you clean meters for us, but we're already, but you said we buy parcel one time.
No, I did, how they, their part is, so. Think about two groups of customers, so there's the, uh, the, the municipal and the mutual, they get billed directly.
Okay.
And they're not, and they're not gonna go to the county, you, you says the, you know, and that could be, we can decide whether that's a monthly, or five month, whatever, but that's a and then that twenty percent of your, your, right, they use twenty percent of their water. And then eighty percent of the water that gets pumped, that's from the rural ag and domestic, those will be built individually. Got you.
Thank you. I know, so, you know, you said we need to use historical data, we said we have it, but do we really have it?
Uh, historical groundwater production estimates? And we have the data, yeah, it's been used to generate the evidence for the annual reports.
But that was pretty, um, broad, not specific.
Uh, I mean, it's aggregated from, for the purposes of the annual report, so they did it as a farm unit by farm unit, and that's the.
I mean, I, when I lived out, I was impressed, it had crop coefficient, and, you know, every, I'm not a farmer, but I have all kinds of crop, you know.
So we're gonna build direct, if we went with, um, the county, we're gonna build directly, so we're gonna get twenty percent. We, we got that, I, I guess I'm curious, how big a problem is it if we only get paid twice a year?
Is the math wrong?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a cash flow issue, but I mean, it's, it's cash flow, we talked about this before, I mean, cash flow is a challenge for to have either way, I, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't think it's a problem, as long as you can get enough cash to get you. But with the state JPA, though, we have a loan, uh, agreements already in place, that has been getting us to where we are now, so we may have to leverage that a little bit more until the property tax money starts coming in. And I, I guess, just for option one, I'd point out, I mean, we can do property tax rule next year, which gives us all the time in the world, it's not like we have to do it this year, but that puts us out a year and a half.
We need to be quick.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I have to go back one more time. You're gonna affect my property tax bill with the water, even though I'm a resident of the city, because the city does have a.
You're, you're insulting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, so you wouldn't see it on your.
Cause it says that we'd go on the property tax.
Yeah, for the rural, I'm sorry, for the rural domestic.
Not municipality. Just gonna be on your water. It'll be that long.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, to that, this is just the option for rural domestic, especially with that.
It is.
Yeah, I'm getting it, just thank you.
Sure.
I favor moving forward, we, we don't, I, I don't have quite enough information about the costs, but I would like to move forward aggressively to consider the county doing the billing. We, we might come up with a phase one, or a two, two tiered billing in the future, but I think right now, we already have the municipals, and the, the cities and the water companies. Right now, we already have the municipals and the the cities and the water companies. We'll get that twenty percent, cause we're billing them directly anyway, right? So uh so anyway, I I would like to move forward aggressively, so we could do that this year. If if you think you're able to do it.
So let me give you the schedule, so if we go to the next slide, and that's where the reality thing is. So we would have a um a board workshop with take over sometime in March, which needs to be determined. But then we would have a special board meeting represented shooting for April seventeenth, that's where the board would receive that report. Um, in March, I would want a board workshop to show you the rates and that would be the financial plan. And then we'll talk within three or five years, I'll, we'll give you a couple of options about funding reserves, the loan, you know, all those considerations. Um, how much we wanna ease into it, and once we get that direction in March, then we write the report, the board receives the report, I would make that report available. To the public, put it on the website, just readily available so everyone can read it, they can have comment. Um, yeah, there's that, um sixty days, forty five days of this required by Prop two eighteen, but we do want this two weeks extra for redemption, that'll be. Um, uh, what's it called?
Sure, statute of limitations.
Yeah, sure, and statute of limitations, I would think about another word, sort of the heart, sorry. Um. So what you wanna do is you wanna get the people uh operating for people to ask questions and then we're gonna ask their question, answer their question. If no one asks you any questions, then they can't sue you. Thank you, was that that? You read it, it is a case of revenues, sir, thank you, that's right, revenues, so. Learning how fancy words today. So, um, that's what we wanna do.
So not a lot of slack with that schedule, four days between two twenty six and July, purpose of the.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then have me out, and then we have the public here in June twenty six. And then and then they, and then we would provide often after they get adopted, then we would provide the county in um in Ju- in August. The the fee by part of it.
Who says government can't work, that's.
But Dan, you you feel pretty confident in getting the information that you get this out there, but you worked with G S I.
Yeah, I mean, I understand we have the information, um like I said earlier, the devil's in the details sometimes, but you know. But I think we've worked through, one of the the red flags or challenges I see, and I don't think it's internal, but. Building in an appeal process into this timeframe, um. You know, potentially that that initial, and Sanjay and Steve will correct me, that initial Prop two eighteen notice is like. The notice of the upcoming potential fee and this is our estimate of your groundwater production and this is what. The property tax roll would be and this is how you protest. Steve?
Yeah, you you kinda captured it, Dan, you you run, tell them, uh identify the parcel, identify the reason, uh the calculation that's leading to the uh. The fee, the basis for the fee, why we're implementing the fee, it just kind of. Enough information for someone to, you know, fully understand the proposed fee so they can come to the hearing, uh you know, prepared to speak on it.
We would have to go through this process whichever way we did the billing, right, keep it funky, work, so. It slipped and we had to do it ourselves, so.
Yeah.
So I know. You need permission to talk. Um, you know, on the last page, um, not to jump ahead in your slides, but I think it's, we need to consider. Um, you know, the per acre for groundwater charge here is sixty five bucks an acre foot. Um, and that's on a million dollars and we did one yesterday in a W M A and. And the the same option was, was it ten dollars or eleven dollars, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, and so, you know, there's a few economies of scale, they use a little more water, but not, they use twenty five percent more water. But we need to really look at what our administrative costs are, because, you know, that's sixty five more than I've seen, and I told you, it's fifty. Fifty bucks in, it's actually fifty an acre in Los Al- in Los Alamos, so, you know. You're gonna have a lot of pushback, that ours is as high as I've seen, you know, we'll have to justify that that budget, which we. We really haven't, you know, I know one budget we saw last time, now we have one that's grown by. Forty percent, you know, what's making up that and are are we really efficiently operating before we start building people? Cause we're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to get compliance.
Right, yeah, and we haven't spent a million dollars yet. Right, that's the budget, you had rough budget, was what it was based off of.
Yeah, this was based off of a million dollars and one last time was six hundred thousand and change.
Yeah.
And uh.
Yeah.
So we just, we'll come every time and find out it's two million dollars and.
Right, we need to, I think Dan needs to go back and really screw that, cause coming in at the beginning here. We don't wanna pie in the sky, we wanna kinda like write to the man's ass there.
And and we haven't done evaluation and inflated the budget from what you was presented last time, I think it's just a snapshot number, you know.
Yeah, accounts for the loan repayment and accounts for building our reserves, so if we have flexibility. With the little repayment, we still pay the loan, we're just gonna be extended out or face it in, list it out.
Yeah.
That will help um ease in the cost.
Yeah, so.
Then the grant money coming in and pays off, that's our loans, take that over the grant.
My point is that in long book, it's, you know, ten bucks break, you know, charge breaker front. And we're up at a big number like this, this is gonna change the agriculture's ability to survive and, you know. Some of the crops that are being grown today just won't be viable if they have a water cost that's, you know, that's higher, so. What could happen then is that instead of billing it against fifteen hundred and if people quit farming, we'll have a smaller pool to build, so I mean, there. It's a, it has happened that way in some other areas where it's curtailed farming and, and you know, maybe that meets some objectives, but probably. You know, there has to be happy medium.
We're so glad we have you on the board for that reason, you just made it all worth it.
Yeah.
Question, Sanjay, um, board workshop, Mark, are you just looking at our north next E M A meeting would be a workshop meeting, is that, or?
That I think is, um, that I mean, at that meeting, we would show the rates, that that we will be showing the three years or five years. A rate for the board to consider to adopt, maybe some options.
Okay, so I I think to, yeah, sorry, specifically your question, I I think not the regularly scheduled time, I think Sanjay's not available. That that week of March, I'm not here either, so we would need to schedule a special meeting.
Also, the third week of March, Ben, is that where you think?
That's kind of what the thought was.
Okay, so the workshop was part of the legal process, through the people offered the workshop to the public, so. Um. Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like the charge, we can't do a charge in the margins, we don't have a budget, you know, we have an estimate. But it's jumping around, you know, and so how can we take a charge?
So you can always charge less than the budget, right, you can't charge more than the budget, so we did that approach, that means that we would be.
So where are we at on a realistic budget to operate, I know we've got, we've seen two estimates, but. What's it, what's it raised the cost on, right?
Yeah, so I mean, we can work on that, um, I, we've got data now and um it's. And and it's pretty, it's good data, though there are a lot of initiatives going on right now that won't be part of normal operation. The Prop sixty eight grant initiative, it's a lot of time and effort is going to that, but a lot of that is being tracked specifically to that, so we can separate that up. Um, I I potentially, one option would be to bring a range of budgets in March, Sanjay. Um, and then the board could adopt a formal budget in April, and I'm just throwing these out as questions.
Uh, yeah, I mean, given that, I'm sort of saying about the budget and I'm. Making an assumption here that maybe the participating agency may help out with a little bit of money, you know. But then and also the desire to board to ease this in, these are a couple of things, so one would be like, you know. Maybe the first year we don't fund the reserve, so we happily have a participating agency as a as a bank for cash flow. Um, the loan, maybe extend that out a little bit and then maybe borrow a little bit more and then, you know, we wrap it up.
Yeah, so I just, if I was, you know, not aware of what's going on like I am here and I get invited to a. Workshop where we have three budgets and, you know, three budgets and we don't know what our budget's gonna be. We're gonna be sending you this bill and your taxes, we're we're a little short on details, it seems. You know, especially for somebody who says you're gonna tell me for water I'm not paying for today, I just think we gotta be buttoned up. In order to, if we're gonna sell this.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to all be like, I'm a hundred percent behind this and I trust this data, cause it's, you know, we are gonna have pushback.
Correct.
And um, you know, I, until we have the budget to, you know, and I think we need to normalize the budget, take out the Prop sixty eight function. So that we understand what what would it be if we weren't doing those projects and that needs to be our first round to go after. So that we get people, you know, run in the process and then if we have justification for increasing it, you know, that's. That's the way to spend elsewhere, but um we just wanna be cautious, we don't aggravate, you know, all of our customers before they pay the first bill.
Yeah, but the budget's gotta be lean, very lean. Like you were saying, the uh reserves, yeah, I'd say, hey, we're just starting, we, if we can't survive a year, we don't need reserves.
Yeah, I've been here a long time, I didn't, I didn't know we had this before.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, Tom, this is a very impressive schedule and I don't everybody realize that, I, this. Is, you know, there's there's budgets, there's some some details we've worked out here, I mean. We wanted to give the board the option, try to move this quickly, but I mean, there are other options. Um, so, or we try to move this quickly and maybe we hit a point where like, alright, we need a little more time and we make. A decision to close that, but I just, you know, we, we wanna give the board options, we're, you know.
But I think, well, what Doug was saying, we need a lean budget and let's see what's the bare bone to get through and see that number as something. That everyone can swallow, you know, that's what we need to see.
Yeah.
And then you go to that twenty fifth meeting and you present something to the public, so, yeah, this is what we got, bare bone. This is a state requirement coming down, but we're all in it together, so we gotta figure it out. And we've come in with bare bones, this is our budget, this is what to make it happen.
Yeah, well, and and also the reality is, some of the people that farm in the E M A farm in the W M A and if it's ten bucks there. Sixty five here, then they say, what the, you know, why is that, never be prepared to answer that question.
Cause there, out there the W M A, what is it, twenty five thousand, eighteen?
In that range, yeah.
Yeah, they're about twenty five thousand, we're fifteen, and you, that's what you're dividing, so that's a big difference, dividing into the same. What numerator, you're gonna get a different big time.
That's absolutely true, and I I'm not arguing that point, but it's those that are paying, that are gonna wonder, you know, what you got, what's the value of that?
Yeah. Dan?
Um, I guess. I'm done, I got, I got a lot of. All right.
Work availability for March twentieth?
Yes, that I was gonna suggest to you, so yeah, that's the third thirty's bid, um, so you're not available for Thursday, so basically no E M A.
I think there is technically Academy on the twentieth, that might be your first schedule, but, well, I mean.
Or six and five.
You're not gonna, yeah, you're gonna have that meeting and then this, so.
There might work, call it workshop, you know, or or have two components, there may be easily a business component for things we need to do. And then a larger, more open forum workshop, I, and Sanjay, I don't know, the format for that workshop, is it? Would you envision a more formal brown act uh meeting or is it more of a Q and A and open dialogue?
With the public?
Yeah.
If we're all there, it's a brown act.
Yeah, it's a brown act meeting, Dan, it would have to be a brown act meeting. Meeting and notice meeting.
Yeah, I guess, could the format be a little different, an alternative, tied in public comment?
Sure.
Very, we just got tagged.
So Dan, you guys, you.
I'll look at our phones.
Yeah, I wanna look at my phone too.
Because there's a couple of people that are gonna be advanced to get other news, S D S.
Yeah, my floor, God, it's my.
Yeah, that's my, is it possible to have it on the nineteenth, or do you always have yours on Thursdays?
Yeah.
Thursdays? We all have other meetings, we all, we all have other meetings on Wednesday?
Yeah.
And your meetings are always, um, if if this time?
No, we're we're, that's later on today's agenda to discuss.
Okay.
Is there a note?
Okay, so it's looking like the twentieth and that means some time, right?
Right.
Like a three o'clock or something? For the the workshop?
The workshop, four P M.
Yeah, can we do, I'm sorry, I have a a webinar at that time, is it possible about?
Five?
E- either later in the evening or earlier in the day.
For Doug, we thought it'd be later.
I don't know, like late, like seven P M, that was too late.
The workshop, though, I mean, farmers' hours, so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Hey, did five o'clock work, so far? Alright, what year are we on now?
I have two, three, the four thirty and another one at five, I mean, I might be able to get five.
One.
That would work for us.
Five?
Yeah, five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And sorry, is this one open to the, like, this is noticed and everyone is?
We, how much time do we have to provide notice?
Seven to two hours.
For a special meeting, it's twenty four hours.
And then, given the significance, we would wanna obviously get notice out.
Yeah, to everybody, we can think of even the papers and everything we can do.
And if we able to get that bare bone budget, so we can.
Yeah, maybe, but something, like I said, that first budget that we brought forth was, you know, at. At a pretty high level estimate based on some other budgets we've seen without the the benefit of, you know, having, you know. Been in this role and seen the costs, um and having that chance to sort of. Dissect how much has been grant related, how much has been non-grant, whatever. Um, yeah, we can, we can definitely come back with the. An update budget.
This schedule's simple.
Option one, can I have a good question?
Consent from the board this night in terms of.
Parcel order option two.
What?
And that's what I'm counting parcel.
Um, I think input from the board, yeah, I don't know that we have, we don't need a. Normal vote or anything, but we want input, and I think we've got.
Yeah, you got it.
And and let's just clarify, I guess what I I think we're getting is the input, is the board would like to retain the option for option one and then. July first county tax roll.
Right, county tax roll.
Um, and to do that, we're gonna need to, you know, adhere to the schedule.
Right, I think that was based on the fact that it's gonna be more cost effective, you know, the administrative cost is low and. You're pretty sure to get into money and. Build that through the property back to the. I think that that's the way the W M A went yesterday, so.
Yeah, my own, that's that's pretty aggressive schedule.
Oh, it is.
That's why we have.
But the W M A is doing those too.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you, Sanjay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're on. Double Y, oh, three two, is that what it was?
Let me start, I lost my agenda. Uh, yeah, double I, three, two, um, so, consideration of formation of ad hoc subcommittee assistance development of an EMA GSA and or joint management area rate study. Uh, first off, I wanted to clarify that the wording in this item was, uh, not the best. It, it, it sort of implies a, a joint management area rate study, that, that was not the intent. The intent was an ad hoc subcommittee potentially for an EMA GSA rate study, or the potential to. Participate with other management areas as an ad hoc committee, not, not a, the joint rate study. Um, yeah, this item, uh, is something that, uh, having talked with representatives from the San Antonio Basin and other basins, they had advocated that ad hoc committees can be. Uh, good mechanisms to drive progress on, uh, initiatives. And so, in, you know, in some of our discussions with them, they indicated that, you know, that was really helpful in them, for them in their well, uh, registration and metering program. Um, I, as I understand, they, they necessarily use it for the rate study, cause they haven't done a rate study as a GSA, that, the, their revenue generate. Revenue generating mechanism is done through the water district, and so, presumably stuff in the process. Um, and so, I, I wanted to get this item on the board, I, you know, in reality, with that schedule, I don't know how much time we had for ad hoc committees. Um, so, uh, you know, we're gonna need to move really fast, and, and have full board meetings to, to meet that schedule, but, uh, it's, I wanted, it was an option that we just wanted to have out there and available. Um, and then also recognizing there are, there are rates that is going on in other management areas, as Dr. Triple already referenced, and, and different rates, and. And it's a, a tricky legal concept, I, not a concept, but there's some tricky legal areas, and there's a lot of detail, as we just saw, and considerations. And so, it's just a lot of work to be done, and that may or may not benefit from it at all.
Yeah, I think we're pretty cool right now, and as a group here, you saw all the input from here, but I don't think you need two of us running over doing something, that's my point. This group here, we're very opinionated, we, we speak it, we speak it very well. And also, is there, do we have a process for ad hoc? How's those established? Does the chair set that out, what's our bylaws say, you know, legal looked into that?
Oh, let's see, jump in here, I don't know that the JPA speaks to that.
Yeah, I've got to, the, the JPA is silent as to the creation of these committees, generally for special districts. Uh, the, you know, the president, uh, the bylaws will authorize a president to appoint an ad hoc, or the board can point it, appoint an ad hoc. Um, and of course, there are, they're designed to be of limited duration, um, you know, for specific items and issues that the board has to deal with, so. Um, just pulling up the JPA again, but I don't see any, uh, it's just essentially, it's silent on it.
And, and, well, you actually are, I was gonna say, here's a thought, I mean, Doug, you, you can't be at the twentieth, right? Maybe you would. Oh, you can't? I was gonna suggest maybe you would be the representative for the board to be on the ad hoc to go work the details before it gets to the workshop. But you would have to.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm looking at what we got going here, we got a bunch right now, let's just, let's get what's on the mic, Dan. Moving on?
Uh, probably a public comment, right? Official item.
Public comment? Okay, one, two, your component.
Alright, another opportunity to hear somebody else talk, so, uh, it's nice to be here with GSI Water Solutions to present, uh, what I call preliminary components. I don't know if that's the, the term, but, uh, there's some of the key findings from the Water Year twenty twenty-four annual report. Um, and to just be, uh, before Tim gets started here, just. The schedule for the Water Year twenty twenty-four annual report has been incredibly compressed because of the requirement, the request from DWR to create a joint report. That joint report will be released soon. Early next week, um, before going to consideration for approval at the March seventh joint management area meeting. So, you know, it, it's one of those, it's, it's a compressed schedule. We tried to move that March seventh meeting date to allow a little bit more time, but the, the complexities of trying to, uh, get three boards to find a new date and time to meet. And in the process, we actually screwed up the availability of one of the boards to meet, and so, uh, it's, it's, we're doing the best we can to schedule this, that we're within. But today, we had an opportunity to have Tim present, uh, a preview of the EMA specific components and by nature.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Doug, and, and, um, so we have much greater presentation performance. As I've been there before in the past, annual reporting is required by the Sustainable Water Protection Act. Um, the regulations are pretty prescriptive, and they, it consists of last two pages are the requirements, and you have the, the GSA aspect, which means every water year, so. To be clear, I can give the next slide, that's great. The, those are the two pages, so, um, the, the water year, and we're talking about ended in September twenty twenty-four, so it's quite a ways ago, way, way, about a long time ago. Um, which water level measurements measured in October, and so we're running a test of getting the next round of water level measurements. Um, and we're just gonna talk to what happened last year, okay? So, we're gonna talk about these elements, pretty first, they don't need to, uh, less questions interrupt as we go, so, for the next slide, thanks. So, first thing that's required is to determine the water year type, as has been discussed before, the, uh, water year type this last year has been wet, it's a, it's the second of, uh, two wet years. Um, the, the charts will show, show the six water years, which went by those six, those are the six water years we've had since the plan period ended in twenty eighteen. So, the, the GSP, the, the plan went into twenty eighteen, these are the six years since then, we had two wet years, the last two, and then we had two above normal years, um, a dry year, a prickly year. So we've got a whole mix of water types in that period. Uh, rainfall during that six-year period is, was eight inches, which is somewhat wetter than the long-term, but we had the historical period. From the eighties to twenty two, that was, uh, about, the, this period shown here is about thirteen percent wetter, that's about two inches a year wetter than the long-term average. Keep that in mind. You got the next slide? Thanks. The GSA is required to present both the groundwater contour maps, which are shown on the left, and hydrographs to show the groundwater conditions in each principal block. We need to remind ourselves, I will, uh, there are two principal block first, a passerous formation, which is the bulk of the basin shown in the middle area. And then a smaller karriagis sand formation that's over on the west side, solving, or solving its water supply, yeah. Uh, contour maps were created based on, uh, uh, data that the county and the memory agencies collect. Um, there's not much water level data, um, for the passerous formation. The little squiggly lines in the middle of the graph on the left show the approximate extent of the wells that are used for the, uh, the, the passerous formation. And you could use more wells versus one thing that we're working. Um, the conditions are from the spring of twenty twenty-four, and the graph on the right shows the, perhaps, or the one that all those wells, those are the red, that will be in the final report. Um, it shows, what was it showing, it shows a brown line, which is the ground surface elevation, and the red line, which is, uh, the minimum threshold, that's where water levels are supposed to come from. Um, you can see that water levels in this particular well are below that, that threshold for now, so. Good, next slide. There's the same data for the karriagis sand, which is again in the lower left side of that map. And, uh, it shows our progress towards implementation, as that line, the blue line, um, moves up and down, could probably should stay above the threshold, long-term. Um, the regulations require us document of, uh, I guess it's really annoying with, uh, but, sorry about the scale, it's hard to see what's going on. The groundwater elevations and karriagis information are much more muted, they don't move around as much, and as in the past formations, it's pretty flat. There's still, someone's a little bit. Remember pretty quick? You're welcome, Charlotte, move on, you're great. So, the regulations that require documenting groundwater extraction, because, uh, central, these numbers should match the rate study, they do, but, uh, Dan, I made sure, and these are used for the rate study for twenty twenty-three. Um, they have to include all water use sectors, so here, they include municipal, uh, reported domestic, small water systems, rural, and agricultural, the same buckets we've been using all along. Uh, they show that ag pumping has been relatively lower the last two years, well, it, they're been wet years, so water, ag point just got way down. So, I'm, I'm speaking of the numbers in the right column, agricultural, we go from twelve to thirteen thousand down to nine thousand, so you lost two year, two water years, so. Total pumping for this one year was twelve thousand eight hundred acre feet per year. Um, you might be curious to ask, uh, the regulations don't require us to talk about magnetic, so it's not the regulations reporting. We, we do, we do need to calculate this, but when, uh, for the annual reporting, because it's not required. Next, thank you. The regulations are prior comparing that strange map, which is the, the location and volume of groundwater extraction by square, we chose to do it by square mile. So where the squares are darker, there, there's more pumping going on, uh, during this, this water year. If there's no square, there's lot, there's less than twenty-five acre feet per year being pumped there, so, pretty interesting stuff out there.
Oh, that's funny. Oh.
Sorry, so, again, is this from the, the satellite imagery, is that where this information comes from?
Right, so this considers all the waters types, ag, municipal, smaller systems, and fiducial, so, yeah. The locations of, obviously, the municipals, generally the lower left, left side of this graph, and so that's for sure that there, ag, they're all, they're all looking.
But each of those squares are how many mile?
I believe there's square miles, you know, there's actually.
One section, a mile?
Yeah. Six hundred and forty acres.
Yeah.
Say it's four. Okay, uh, next slide, Charlotte? Yes. So, the surface water comes from imported and locally derived sources diverted from San Diego, pumped from San Diego Relugan. Um, as shown on this table, for this water year, it includes, uh, importation, pumping by solving and any one, so. As well as all of the total river pumping itself afforded to Zone A, or the parent of the conservation district. It was all, all of them, so. Uh, the total volume of surface water used was roughly six thousand acre feet per year from all the surface water sources. Did you know that? So bringing those all together, we have the total water use, which is about eighteen thousand eight hundred acre feet per year, which is, like, two wet years, are slightly lower than they have in the, the long past. How's this compared to the average period, that historical period? Well, uh, the average for the historical period was, um, about, uh, uh, the average groundwater use, the, um, the groundwater use, so the twelve thousand eight hundred eight. When, in the historical period, was slightly higher, fourteen thousand seven sixty, so. Right now, for this period, there's slightly less groundwater pumping, because it's been wetter. This is something maybe we should consider for the rate study period, I'm not gonna think. And, uh, we should, George, thank you. Again, one, one other thing we need, we, the GSA needs to show is change of groundwater storage. It's a graph here that shows a squiggly line, it shows change of groundwater storage, I see it's dashed, and it should have been of a stream size, so sorry about that. Um, but it shows that, um, it's required to show a water manager method that is used, that within, what, uncertainty of the water stock, the, of the amount of water used, showed the water year type, groundwater use. The regulations require it to look kind of like this, so. Overall, um, since the end of the historical period, in twenty eighteen, the water level has to, uh, so groundwater sources declined. And since, uh, twenty fifteen, it's declined by fifteen thousand two hundred acre feet. Fifteen thousand have declined, show that. Take, uh, yeah.
I'm looking at the.
Right.
It looks like that you have a bounce back there.
That's right, that's right. Good. Yeah, I, I think the next slide will help.
I'm sure.
Okay, so this year, we did have a bounce back, as Dr. Jones points out, and we had a total change of, uh, groundwater storage that went up, so more water came back. Uh, this year and last year, um, in response to wet conditions, so, good. Glad to see people reading our, our report, understanding it, that's good. The estimated annual change was, uh, similar to other years with similar amounts of rainfall. So, uh, there were about, there were three other years that had roughly twenty inches of rainfall, and during those times, um, groundwater, the increase in groundwater storage is about four thousand acre feet per year. And every year, when there's over seventeen inches of rain, uh, the change of storage comes up, there's more groundwater winning storage, so. Interesting, very attached to the rainfall, with this current public, it's, I mean, this. Next, please. Thank you, now we get towards, uh, the progress towards implementation of the plan, first, um, the graph here is, uh, color coded, hopefully you can see the colors there, a little lost out from where I stand. Um, the lowering of groundwater levels that are likely to cause undesirable results could occur, could occur, when groundwater levels in the two principal blocks first remain. Uh, below the minimum thresholds in fifty percent of the represented wells. So we decided if this number shown on this table drops below fifty, then, uh, undesirable results could start happening, so. Uh, for this year, water levels remain high enough, that, that fifty percent trigger has not been exceeded, so squares this year are still green. Any questions there?
Yeah, right, thirty-one, thirty-eight, for.
Right.
Okay. Yep. But we were, worst case, sixty-two.
But. And in twenty eighteen, none of them were below the minimum thresholds, you see the zeros at the top.
Right.
Right. Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, speeding towards the end of this mini presentation, um, the next slide. We, uh, are implementing and planning quite a few projects and interactions now in the basin, um, described in the plan, uh, part of which is being grant funded. And, uh, it's, it's gonna be discussed, inappropriate about a detailed, not, not incredibly detailed, not, um, not too brief. It's, uh, pretty middle of the road, doesn't describe every single thing that we're doing in great detail. But we do describe all the actions that are happening around the, the EMA, so, to avoid the undesirable ones, it's terrible, so. Yeah, the next steps, if you don't mind, are, like Dan just mentioned, it was a great place to end. So tonight, the meeting introduces the EMA's portion of the annual report. The overall annual report will be, include the western, central, and eastern, and a third, so it's deep in the bottom of the report this year, and it'll be one big report. Done by Stetson and GSI, prepared by Stetson and GSI, um, under Stetson's cover, they're taking care of putting it all together. Inedible task, of putting it all together, and then that'll be presented next Friday at a joint meeting, and you'll, uh, to be approved, and then shortly thereafter, it'll be submitted to DWR on time.
Will we get, wouldn't we actually see that report?
Danger.
Uh, I, early next week.
We'll have some time to look at it before we approve it.
I, we're trying to provide as much time as possible. But it's not.
Yeah, but I mean. When I, when I called it an inedible task, I mean that it's, it's fuzzy. It's non-technical. We just get all these in the one big report. It's a good, you're on the front of their, their work. Which means having a page.
Yeah, to alleviate that in future years, you know, we would like to move the, the joint meeting in March back. So that it's at least a week and an extra week in the schedule would be really helpful. So. Is that joint meeting would be in the second week of March in the future, what we would propose.
There's a lot of it absolutely unavoidable because the current district doesn't receive pumpage reports from landowners until very late. That one, I understand. I mean, they don't have to compile the late entries and all, all that data until pretty late. So. There might be ways to fix it. It's pretty, it's pretty tough to figure it out. So pushing it back is the best.
Unless they get their reports earlier, then it's better for, yeah. To do that. Before we go, Western and Central, they didn't have these because they're all above minimum?
Right. So, uh, DWR thinks of this as any base done. And the three major areas are, all have their own water budgets.
Right.
Both the central and western management areas are in surplus, while the eastern management area remains in deficit. So on a whole, I don't know if it matters, but it's a smidge positive.
Yeah.
Good.
There's maybe one.
Any, any public comment?
Public comment on this. I'll make a big set. Everybody. Okay. Moving on. We have.
Item sixteen, four, one. Uh, this can be quick. It's a receiving file. I have to log, hydrogeology consulting services, RFPs. This is what, one of the steps we need to do to, um, uh, to complete component five, design and oversee construction and monitor wells and potometers. So, uh, an RFP has been released to hire hydrogeology, hydrogeology consultant. And we've included it here for the, the board's consideration. If there are any comments or concerns, we would take them. We could issue an addendum to the RFP. It's already, it's already been released just because we wanted to move quickly to be able to meet the grant deadlines, but we're still in the solicitation window. So we could change it if there's any concerns. But we just want to make sure that.
Any questions? Who's gonna, uh, review the bits? Do you review them?
Uh, yeah, I, I will review them. I, I don't know that they've fully defined a selection committee yet, but yeah. The, the, the RFP is for public services for each of the management areas. Because the, the thought was that there's economies of scale by, are in one hydrogeologists to do all the design and construction oversight and hiring one driller to mobilize the drill, the wells in each of the management areas. So, um, yeah, I would review that from presumably represented from the other.
Okay. It would be as the process of awarding the contract and all that you'd be.
Yeah. And, and so will the board. Uh, this is something that will come to the board through your approval, consideration and contract execution.
And lastly, are legal advisors good with this? Any liability issues?
I'll let legal speak for themselves, but.
Uh, no, I don't see any, any liability issues with this. I think we're on solid ground.
Okay. Legal was heavily involved in how to review and develop for there.
Very good. Okay. Move on then. Anything?
Public comment.
Yeah. Public comment on that. There are none? Number seven, right?
Yeah, I think I, I handled this one, Dan.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, um, this is a proposed, uh, contract amendment for the, uh, for the agency concerning, uh, Prop 68 requirement that, uh, the agency develop an implementation plan. Uh, as you know, the plan's been developed and, uh, it does require that, uh, there be oversight and coordination of the different elements of the plan and the different personnel involved in implementing the plan. And, um, what's before you is a proposed amendment to the existing contract with Confluence to expand the scope of services to, uh, address the, uh, need for oversight and coordination of the, the work plan being implemented. You, you have in your packet, the, the contract and the, um, scope of services that's amended. There's a, a dollar amount of $169,426 attached to this amendment. Uh, as to the scope of services, I, I defer to Dan to, uh, to go into those in detail. But, um, we've, we reviewed the, uh, the work plan implementation, uh, schedule or the work plan implement, work plan itself, I should say. Uh, and based on that, we drafted this proposed amendment, uh, to the Confluence contract to, um, allow for this other work to be performed. Uh, and of course that's before you now. A recommendation is to approve it. And I would be happy to answer, answer any questions about the contract. But as to the, the scope of services, I defer to Dan to answer any questions in that regard.
Any questions? Okay, I got a question. Okay. 169,426. And it goes through the remainder of fiscal year 25, which is in June. You, you're going to get all the work done, all this done in a short period of time?
Um, well, I think there's, there's a lot of work ahead of us. Uh, I don't know that we can spend that budget, that amount of time. But if we don't have that available, we're not going to be able to get all that work done. I mean, it's a time and materials budget. So any unused funds would, would not be charged to the GSA. Uh, we based that budget estimate based on the, the period of work, uh, for October, November, December, where we were supporting the EMA GSA with components two, three, four and five. Um, and then adjusted those, those, those costs based on our anticipated future costs for the different tasks. Some of them are going to ramp up like the rate study. Some of them are going to ramp down like the annual report. But others are ramping up like the well registration and metering. And then component five is going to ramp up because we're going to, you know, be selecting hydrogeologic consultants going up to bid for drilling contractors. And so it's, it's based on a, a, our best estimate of anticipated future costs.
And this is grant money paying for it, correct?
All that is grant funded. Yeah.
And, and you're doing the job, legal, that's all pathetic then, because you're on employee all that like the sixth step.
Yeah. So if you recall, in the original proposal that Confluence provided, uh, in September, it envisioned that we would develop the implementation plan that was presented in December. And that plan would outline it, it, the plan that how we can get all of this work done by next April. And that some of that might be self-performed, uh, under the other services as directed component of the original contract. Um, but I'll let Steve speak, legal component of that.
Well, the, uh, from a legal perspective, we have an existing agreement with Con, with Confluence. And this is essentially an amendment to the one section of the Confluence agreement, which describes the scope of services. And it expands the scope of services to capture that language that, uh, it looks like it starts at, uh, pay of the, um, of the agreement, uh, at least I'm looking on, uh, page 106 of 110 of the packet. And you'll see the, the, the legal aspect of this is pretty short. We're just amending, um, section 5.1 of the original agreement. And we include the services that have been identified as needed. So in all other respects, the original conflict, Confluence contract remains in effect.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I don't have a, um, you know, the, the grant that we got and where, when we, whether, what needs to be done, whether we have enough money to do this, but at the same time, we're kind of thinking that if we don't do this, we're not going to be able to spend the money on the timeframe that's involved. But I don't know, usually you have a, you know, a budget associated, you know, with, with where we're at in that process. And I, I just don't have a handle. I don't know if you can speak to that, but that.
Yeah. So.
I think I understand it, but.
We've been working with, uh, the other management areas to present a status of the budget, uh, at the March 7th meeting. And at least from components two and five, the, the burn rate across the different management areas and, and, and the EMA is under the, the, the anticipated spending rate to spend the money by the time. So, um, you know, I think, at least from my perspective, we've made a lot of significant progress, literally in this meeting with the access agreements and environmental documents and metering policy. So a lot of the work is getting done and, and the budget is still there.
Yeah, that's. I just don't have, you know, a feel for those numbers without drawing, but I guess they will.
Okay. Any question?
So, any motion to approve the proposed amendment somewhere?
All right. I'll second it.
In terms, seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hope. You would consider changing dates in the GSA meetings and documentation format?
Yeah. And so I, this was a requested item with respect to future dates and times that we've talked about in the March date time. But I did want to provide some clarification and some more in terms of documentation format. We've been hosting these meetings virtually, um, we've been recording them. I don't know that we've been making the recordings available on the website today. But then we've been developing what I would call kind of like hybrid minutes. It's not a full transcript, but it's a pretty significant narrative and it takes quite a bit of time to develop that narrative. And so I guess I would recommend or propose that we can go to action minutes and make them the recording available. Save a lot of staff time. Um, the recording is available with the transcript. I mean, so if anybody wants to see what happened, there's a full record of the meeting. That's the official record. And then the meeting that's included in your packet would be streamlined. And it's, this was the item, this was the specific direction, this was the specific action, this was the vote, and it would save time and money. But like, I would propose that as part of the thought. John?
I, I support that. I just, I find, um, the, the way we get our materials is, is cumbersome. Um, ideally it would be in the agenda, you know, we could just, there would be a link and we could get to that particular report. I don't know if that's easy to do. If it's not, then at least the page number would be helpful so that when we're scrolling through, we can get there. Otherwise it takes a lot of time.
I would second that.
Yeah, we're having it there. That's a great suggestion. I think that's, uh, definitely doable as hyperlinks within the PDF. We're just, um, and, and if not, yeah, we're just put the agents, that's in the WMA yesterday. So.
Yeah.
Made it a lot easier to follow. Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. But the link would be able.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and the other issue, uh, I guess, I, I would favor the action minutes. I, I think. Legally, you know, for, for management purposes, we just need to know what we decided and, and have that. And, and if there's any question about what we decided, then we have the record. So we don't need more and certainly don't want to spend more time just generating anything. I, I would very much like to move our meetings to four o'clock rather than six o'clock, if that's at all possible. Or early during the day, um, we kind of talked about this last time a bit and so I'm putting it back out there.
Yeah, I think part of the pushback is just people getting their work, um, four o'clock is a little earlier. I don't know if you have any constraints with respect to your schedule, but, um, making the meetings accessible to the public is kind of important. And I think that's why we've always had it at six thirty and then we moved it down to six o'clock. So people can be here.
I wonder if they can hear some numbers to the public.
Yeah, I, I think you guys should, should weigh in on this one. When is it convenient to, to me? I know it's getting a little late tonight, but we had a lot of trial options. So.
Hey, but you guys like Saturday?
Um, since it's once a month, I can come at four o'clock convenient guys. Then that's feeding abortions and stuff like that. But for one day in a month, I could go like, oh.
Anything else?
Do you, what did you say?
I saw somebody nothing back there.
It's a matter of, it's one. They're just.
Earlier than like.
No, I, either way.
Anyone?
Yeah.
I get a vote, uh, earlier is better. You know, we have a drive back and give it a little crank. All right. I'll make the motion that we move it to the same day to the four o'clock for the rest of the year.
Yeah, have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Your call. Don't be it.
Yeah. Well, future agenda items. Um, oh, sorry. Any specific future agenda items? Obviously, I mean, we're going to bring in a lot of this stuff. I mean, it, the component breakdown, is that worked? Is that helpful for you? I mean, we're trying to keep that structure, but obviously the rate study coming back, well, meeting importance just comes back. Elements of component five are coming back. So anyway.
Let's say you got twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Informational and your.
We don't need much.
Absolutely. Okay, we got the next thing coming up in, um, the area water meeting. You guys all, all ready? Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have a forum at the Marcella. Mary's, I've got new for you on the south of there.
We became, maybe we didn't have any, we had conflicts with others.
Well, I think we're going to merge it. Right. That's the only start I thought. That's a workshop.
And then the next one, it won't be at six, it'll be at four on the 27th.
That one's going to get moved. Well, yeah, that'll be merged with the CAG on the 20th. So no margin.
Yeah, the point is seven. That's that new meeting. Looks out to be five.
The next meeting will be. So we're, we're moving the March 27th meeting to March 20.
It's a jumping out of all these.
Very much.
Okay. Yeah. We're doing the one. Joe says no. That's German. Thank you, everybody. We wish you very much. We burned much.